Now in session, we do have some updates from the last time we met on state revenue. And once Chris concludes, then if we have any public speakers lined up, we'll hear them and then we'll have the work session after that. Just for the record, we did not receive any public feedback by email for the budget work session topic tonight. So I do believe we have at least a speaker outside. So as soon as Chris is done, we'll invite that person.
We have one.
Public comment, okay? So Mr. Hartlove.
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart, Commissioner Weaver, board members. We do have some update, some updated information since we last spoke about the budget back on January 13th. The, the, the big event that happened since, since that presentation is the governor's budget was released. And it was good news for us, I think, if you remember back on the 13th, we gave a range of state revenue. And that range was fairly wide and it had a, had a, a pretty negative potential, but we were hopeful at that time that we would have a hold harmless and hold harmless would bring us some place close to level funding. And that is what has been included in the governor's budget. The governor included a hold harmless and that hold harmless results in us netting an additional $100,000. So superintendent's budget at this point, the state isn't, is, is pretty accurate. We, we included zero from the state, so that's pretty much where we are. And again, we were hopeful that that was going to happen and it's good news because it could have been, it could have been quite devastating for us had that hold harmless not been included. So that's a big piece of additional information there. The other part of state revenue is blueprint funding. This is another thing that we were very hopeful that blueprint would not be touched to, in order to balance the budget. And it, in the governor's budget, it has not been. It's, it's all, the, the blueprint funding has been level funded from last year. So all the dollar amounts that we received last year from the, from the state as part of blue, the blueprint funding remain in, in the governor's budget. We, we've received dollars for special education, pre-kindergarten, TSI, and for a coordinator of mental health position. All, all of that revenue remains in the budget. We also, because we've expanded our pre-K program, we've also, we also received an additional 180,000. K for specifically for that, that, that purpose. The, I didn't point out at the beginning of this slide, the blueprint funding is for, much of this is restricted funding, so it's, it's, it's very particular in what you can and cannot spend it for. And then the governor also included an additional 1.6 million for supplemental instruction and tutoring. Those, which will, will be very helpful for, helpful to us in responding to the pandemic next year. So that, that is the update on state revenue. At county, it's just upbringing, kind of reiterating what we had included in, in the superintendent's proposed budget. We have no additional information at this point in time. Just to kind of reiterate, we included the, what the dollar amount that's in the plan and in the county's five-year plan, which was adopted last spring, they've included an increase of 3.13%, which equates to $6.2 million. Their process is not really too, too far underway yet, so we'll certainly be listening and, and, and trying to absorb all the, the discussions that they have. But that's where we are at this point in time. So I would say the first step in the process has been, you know, good news, the governor came through for us and, and, and that hold harmless will be very, very helpful. So with that, that's kind of an update from, on where we stand from the last time we met. We have some other slides that we'll talk about once we get to the work session. I would say for, you know, anybody from the public who's, who's listening, there's, all of this information is out on the web. This presentation will be out on the web tomorrow. The entire budget document is out on the website as well as prior presentations are out there as well. And there's also a, a link for feedback to the, to the system. So with that, I turn it back over to Dr. Lockhart.
Thanks for starting us off there, Chris, and we'll move to the, the public hearing portion. And so I'm going to go see if we have, okay.
Oh, Marshall, I'm closer. I'll go.
As far as I know, I always hold my voice up there. Thank you.
Teresa McCullough.
Good evening, Dr. Lockhart, board members and Commissioner Weaver. I'm Teresa Basler McCullough, president of the Carroll County Education Association. And first of all, I want to thank you. We are very appreciative of the six full-time special educator positions that came to fruition this year. It's been extremely beneficial to our educators and students. And we know that whenever positions are added directly to the classroom in front of the children, the advantages of learning is definitely maximized. So I've been reflecting and for 30 years, when I was in the classroom, I'd go to board meetings annually and I would hear, you know, educators and leaders ask for salary raises, you know, for our educate, for our educators. The last six years, I've been advocating for educators. But I will tell you that if there is ever a year that our educators and employees deserve compensation, it's now. And, you know, it's for, obviously for the workload required in this present hybrid and virtual environment. So with that being said, I'm going to end on a quote with, from President Joe Biden. "Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McCullough. I don't believe there are any other speakers, so that would conclude the, the public hearing portion this evening. I'm looking at Dwayne over there, no other speakers. Thank you, sir. Okay, with that then, Mr. Hartlove, I'm going to ask you to pick back up and then we can get into the, the work session. And Chris, let me, if I can, just to, to offer sort of a starting point for the discussion, like I said, Chris is going to present a couple more slides as a reminder of some of the budget priorities we suggested at the January meeting when I submitted my proposed budget. And the items are, you're going to see are going to be broken out between things that require ongoing revenue funding and things for which we could use one-time funding. I'll remind you and the, the public that a lot of the federal funding or sometimes even the state funding we receive comes in the form of grant or one-time expenditure. It's not a part of our operating ongoing. It's incredibly helpful, but the operating budget that I propose to you is about ongoing funding commitment. And so our biggest challenge typically comes with finding sufficient ongoing revenue for system needs and priorities. In January, I noted three major priorities for this ongoing funding. One was not new by any means and two were items that we've identified this year, particularly and partly due to the pandemic. As you might recall, we had extensive bub, public budget work sessions, if you will, and processes. We were out in schools last year talking with parents and teachers and we developed a series of system priorities based on our strategic plan. That was really important work that we did and it's still really important to us moving forward. And we're, we're working to tie those priorities, we, we were working to tie those priorities to the county's five-year funding plan that we had worked so well with our Board of County Commissioners on to establish. And we began to phase in items and we were talking about what, what the next several years would look like. And then unfortunately, as we all know, due to the pandemic, the, the county could not implement the five-year plan this year. And so just reiterating that for a little bit of history, where we've been, the work that's happened, there's still some really important ongoing priorities that we'd like to accomplish. And so Chris is going to kind of go over some of those, give us a little reminder and then we'll get into the work session. So thank you, Chris. Go ahead. I think you're muted there, Chris.
Hate when that happens. Sorry about that. That's a, a good point you made there, Dr. Lockhart, one, dividing things between ongoing and one-time. We have two slides for you. One is the ongoing revenue priorities. I think that's really where we need to spend the bulk of our time. The one-time, many of the one-time items, we are developing plans as we speak and many of those are in response to the pandemic and, and what specifically we're going to be doing to, to recover once we get out of the, once we're beyond the pandemic. So, and, and we do have some identified fund sources already for those items. So we certainly will talk about those, but I think a lot of the focus should be on the ongoing items. And our list is fairly specific. The one item is, we have, many of our special educators are 10-month positions. We do have some 11-month positions. One of the things we want to do is convert a, a good number of those folks. We're thinking in the, in the range of approximately 80 of those folks from 10 months to 11-month employees for many reasons. First up, the first priority would be for compensatory services, but certainly even beyond that, we have many needs for our special educators that go beyond the, the typical school year. So that's one of the items that we have, that we're looking at and we're, we, we're considering a priority. Second item is an alignment item. And when I say an alignment, this is a case where in many, in many examples, we are already spending some of these dollars, we're finding other ways to, to, to cover these instructional materials and resources, but we really, as we go forward, would like to have an adequate budget in the curriculum area to procure both the textbooks and the electronic instructional materials that we need beyond the, the pandemic. These are things that we need really regardless of the pandemic, these are things that are necessary regardless. And certainly, as, as Ms. McCullough mentioned, employee compensation is, is, is one of the high priorities i- in our, in our budget. Beyond that, Superintendent mentioned in his opening remarks, the process that we had last year, we had a fairly rigorous process where we went out to the community, worked with many groups on developing priority needs. We, we started that last year, but certainly if we were to, to have any money beyond what we are anticipating we have, certainly we, we, we have plenty of items that we could utilize those funds for. So we had, we had a long list of things that we could be doing with ongoing revenue. So that is the ongoing slide. I'll just speak a little bit about the, the one-time items. And these are pretty much what you're going to expect. We, we're looking at, you know, a lot, a lot of the things that have happened because of the pandemic and some of the funding sources that we have, the ESER funds from the federal government, for instance, are going to go towards academic recovery, interventions for students, technology support that begin, that's becoming a bigger, bigger item for us is, is not only providing this, the students with, with technology, but also being able to replace those items. So technology support and maintenance is certainly a big item. And then as long as we're in the pandemic, we're going to need PPE, continue to need PPE and supply. So we have, we have plenty of needs for one-time items. And I would say in the one-time item area, we do have some revenue sources at this point that will, should be able to cover those one-time needs that we have. So, so with that, I'm certainly here for any questions and I guess I'd give it back to Superintendent to begin the discussion.
Ms. Sevigny?
Thanks, Mr. Hartlove. I, I did have several questions on the ongoing revenue priorities. Would we be able to put some numbers around this, just so we understand what we're talking about? So converting 80 employees from 10 to 11 months, is there a dollar figure associated with that?
We did, we did a very preliminary and actually was working on trying to flesh that out a bit further, but we're looking at approximately $750,000 for that.
And then what about the, the alignment of the instructional materials? Can you give some examples of some things that we now need that weren't previously needs and about how much that, we expect that to cost us in ongoing funds?
Yeah, Chris, I'm going to ask Ms. McCoslin to, to jump in there.
Hi, good evening, board members and Dr. Lockhart. Yes, so there's always a, a need to make sure that our resources are current and are equitable for all students. And they do carry large costs. And, and we're seeing at the elementary level where we need to embed certain units of study within social studies and we don't have any of, any of those resources available to us right now. But we want to continue to curate content and invest in resources that are equitable for all students within the classroom setting. We're also working to increase AP and dual enrollment opportunities for students. For example, Spring Board is a program that we're embedding at the middle school level to prepare kids for the AP level coursework at the high school level. As Mr. Hartlove mentioned, interventions are going to be critical for us to continue to identify interventions that are specific, you know, to use with specific students and the needs that they have. And as always, we're always looking for ways to expand those pathway opportunities for students to ensure that they're college, career and community ready.
So these aren't necessarily things that are coming about from being in more of a virtual or electronic world. This is simple curriculum additions.
Yes.
And being able to distribute those, okay.
Yes.
And some of its upkeep is, I'm sorry, Ms. McCoslin, some of it's, you know, you could call upkeep too. After, you know, after so long, you know, I always think about like elementary language arts, there's a whole lot of text resources that we need to provide for kids. That's always a big ticket item. We don't do it every year because we like to make those, those materials last for as long as we can. I'm just using this as an example, but just talking about the instructional materials and the instructional resources that we avail to students, there are times when we have to update, refresh or look at, you know, new, new materials to support, support the instruction. And I think there were a couple of things you gave that were sort of examples like that. And we certainly could put a more cohesive listing together for the board for next week's meeting, if you like.
And is that all materials that, that would go through the curriculum council for approval at the end of next year? Is that what we would expect to see?
In some cases, it's, it's updating to a newer edition of a textbook. So like when we look at, let's take accounting, for example. Our accounting courses, our accounting program is aligned to Carroll Community College. So when we have to change the curriculum to align with Carroll Community to ensure our students are receiving that transcripted credit when they complete accounting too, we need to make sure that our curriculum is in alignment with the community college's curriculum as well. And in many cases, that requires us to purchase new textbooks. So we're maintaining that articulation agreement appropriately with that post-secondary institution. So that's just one, one example, but once, and as standards change at, at the State Department of Education, we want to make sure that our materials are updated with, to meet the current standards. So in some cases, they've already been approved by curriculum council. We may just be purchasing the most recent addition to ensure that we have the most recent information to align to those standards.
Okay, so when you're saying that the elementary social studies curriculum is going to be changing, though, those are things like if they haven't already been approved by the curriculum council, that would be going through the curriculum council?
If it's a new material, yes, it would go through curriculum council. What we see at the elementary level is because they have so many different resources that they do use, that we have to replenish them after so many years because we either lose co, you know, students sometimes lose copies or, you know, just the, the pages fall out or the binding falls apart and those kinds of things. So it, it is typically every five, six to seven years, there's a recurring purchase of, of new materials to make sure that all students have access to the, to the materials used within that particular content.
And we've estimated about a million, 1.2 million to try to, to achieve this piece of the, of the proposed budget. I've certainly seen it in years where it could be tons more based on the need, whatever it is we're, we're replacing. So we're trying to look at what's most important and keeping up to date, making sure we have and, and going from there.
Ms. McCoslin, I, I have a, a question. I know that we have a reoccurring payment such as on Schoology as a renewal and Lexia and all them. Are we looking at that group of, that we're using there? Are we keeping all of them or are we adding to them?
So for Schoology, we'll continue to use that. That's our learning management system that we're just starting to roll out, but we are looking at how we can procure our textbooks at a cheaper rate through textbook cartridges, basically that would be uploaded through Schoology. So students would have access at all times to their textbook. So if they came home and they, you know, there was a hardback version or, you know, from a previous year at home and they forgot it at school, then they would be able to access the text through Schoology while they were at home. So that is not going to be possible in all contents for all courses. There's still going to be some hardback, you know, course textbooks and resources there. But yes, we will continue to, to look and, and implement Lexia and Dreambox and, and the other programs that we typically have. We don't typically buy them for every single student in elementary school, but in, you know, in our current situation, we have utilized those types of resources much more in an effort to, to help reach more kids.
Right, I think last summer, didn't, didn't we purchase several more licenses? I think it was Lexia maybe just this past summer. Is that correct, Ms. McCoslin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I asked. I said, are we going to keep all those? Are we going to add more to it? Because I can see what a great use it is at, at my house. She's on Lexia all the time, so.
So, so that, that'll be a conversation that, that we will have. I mean, if we're in a, more of a traditional environment, as we have been in the past, I don't see the need to spend that amount of money on a resource that we've never utilized that way before.
Okay.
So, you know, I think it's just more of a planning thing. We'll have to see how it goes. I certainly want to be mindful of, of how we're, we're utilizing our resources and, and make sure we're having a good return on investment with, with what we are procuring.
Yeah, and I'd have to piggyback on what Angie's saying. You know, I've, I've observed their process, Jason and Angie, and their, the whole team down there. And they really do look at things critically, try to prioritize, try to see what we're using and best utilize the resources that, that, that we have. So I, I, I think they're doing a great job and I, the things that they have in there are not kind of wish, wish list types of things. I think there are things that we truly are utilizing and need.
Right, I was just looking down the line, hoping that we get back to our normal selves and might not need all these. So that's, that was my point. Thank you.
And, and to piggy, to piggyback on that part, part of what you're saying, we, when we put this budget together, we really did talk about, let's, let's kind of put the pandemic to the side. Let's talk about our normal operations. We'll deal with the pandemic separately because we do have resources for that. So pretty much what you're seeing in our ongoing budget is assuming that the pandemic is waning.
All right. Dr. Dorsey?
Yes, I was just wondering if any of the curriculum materials had been polited last year or during this year that we know we're going to try to incorporate into the instructional program next year? And then I guess my second question, I was looking at the special educators. So with that number, it seems like in every school, there are certainly going to be special educators who are going to be increased from 10 months to 11 months. And again, I'm just thinking of, you know, the timeline that we use to actually inform staff of their positions for the next year so that they'll know that, that there's going to be that change in their assignment.
I'll start us off here, Dr. Dorsey, and then Angie can ask, answer the question about the pilot, any pilot programs and Nick can also chime in. The, the 11-month special education teacher position would be an apply-for kind of, of position. So we wouldn't be necessarily designating people. We'd be looking for our best and brightest who want to take advantage of that opportunity and apply for an 11-month position within their schools. Nick, am I capturing that correctly? And then we can go, go back to Angie.
Yes, sir, you are.
Ms. Sevigny?
Well, I.
Oh, no, no. Did you have anything else?
Yeah, we didn't answer that, that second piece that Dr. Dorsey asked. Angie? Angie?
Yeah, thank you. So as far as piloting curriculums from this past year, yes, the hope is that we can continue to move forward. Again, like Chris said, you know, we've had the unfortunate part of the pandemic, but we still want to push forward because we know that our students want new things and want the expansion of programs and opportunities, and we want to deliver those.
Thank you. Ms. Sevigney? I was just going back to the special educators one again. Now, I know that we have a significant obligation on compensatory services. Will this amount, so converting 80 employees from 10 to 11 months, will that meet our obligations to our students?
I'll start.
With that amount?
I'll start. That's a great question. This helps us, but this isn't the sole answer. We're also looking to some of the one-time funding, as well as any other source of funding that we could find, to continue to provide supports throughout the school year, in the summer. So yeah, it's more than just increasing somebody from 10 months to 11 months. That helps us, especially at that number where we can have at least an 11-month teacher at every school, if not more than that, where those folks are available, their work assignment is different than a 10-month. They have extra hours where they can be contributing to that. But Nick, I know you also have plans, and Jason, we've talked about, we're starting to map out, and we're hoping, if not at the February meeting, by the March meeting, we're going to give the board a short-range and a long-range plan for what we hope to be able to accomplish with recovery and interventions and support for students over the next 18 months to two years. Nick, do you want to add to, in addition to the 11-month pieces? It's more than that.
Correct, Lockard, and you said that very well. There will be some need for potentially some hourly work from our staff. The scope of recovery and compensatory services is going to be very large. We have 3,000 students in our system that receive special education services. I would estimate 2,000 or more will most likely be eligible for some sort of recovery or compensatory service. We're not going to start making those eligibility determinations until April. We need a little time to be able to collect data on how our students are progressing, but that will help. And the other big piece that the 80 number comes from, a part of that genesis, is that is typically the number of teachers that we require to provide extended school-year services. So ESY and compensatory services are two very different things, but if this group of staff, if we were able to convert 80 staff members to 11 months, those 80 would provide extended school-year services in addition to recovery and compensatory services. And again, trying to think down the road, we most likely will be providing recovery and compensatory services this summer, potentially the following summer, but in the out-years from there, the expansion of the staff could have tremendous impact on some of our workload challenges that we have, and obviously also to provide greater opportunities for our students. We could do assessments in the summertime, we could provide professional learning, leadership opportunities for our special educators. So there's tremendous opportunity for us down the road, but the 80 has come from, that's typically how many staff we need to get through ESY. Now, typically, a staff member works about a half a day during ESY, and again, that's typically four days a week, but if our staff is working full days over, you know, most likely over a five-day work week, we're able to do a lot of additional things in addition to providing our ESY services as it relates to recovery.
And Dr. Lockard, the plans that you said that you're going to be bringing to either the February or the March meeting for an extended recovery learning plan, that's not only for special needs students, that's across the system, correct?
That is across the system to cover everything from special education to credit recovery to you name the kind of support. And Mr. Anderson and his team have been working on that. I didn't want to commit to next Wednesday just yet. We haven't had a chance to talk about that in the last day or so, but it's in the works, and that planning is going on for all of our students.
And do we have a feel for what kind of budgetary impact that would have? I mean, I'm assuming it involves a lot of additional tutoring, focusing on, you know, ESL groups?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's fairly extensive because here, there's a few things to think about. So let's just put special education aside for a minute. We know we have thousands of other students who need support, they need intervention, that aren't special education students, that need credit recovery, that maybe want to take a class again or take something to help them get ready for the next sequence of courses in that subject area. Math is a great example. And so that's going to require time. It's going to require teachers. It's going to require us to be able to pay teachers, and we have to make it an incentive for folks to do it. I know people are stretched, and I know they're, you know, a lot of people are exhausted because of what we're all trying to work through, and so we need to make that worth folks' time because we don't want to just stand something up because we have to stand it up. We want to make sure it's worthwhile for everybody, most especially our students. And so, you know, we're looking at a lot of the funds that are being made available through ESER, through the federal government. We're trying to figure out what's becoming available, and John or somebody can jump in if they want to, what's becoming available for the governor's budget. That's all still being dissected. There's going to be some funds that have to be used toward tutoring intervention. And so, but we think that's going to be in the millions of dollars over the next 18 months to two years, easily the millions of dollars, because when you're looking at a school year, after-school, weekends, summer programming, we also, I think it's important that we don't forget about enrichment and acceleration in this process as well. You know, we typically run those kinds of programs. I don't think we should stop running those programs. And so I want to be able to continue with those pieces as well. I don't have an exact two-year number for you, but it is.
So Dr. Lockard, we don't have a two-year number right now, Ms. Sevigney, but what I can tell you is that extensive planning has begun and will be ready to be delivered to the board within the next six weeks. The exciting part from all of this is, as Dr. Lockard just said, we can really begin to differentiate service throughout the school year for all of our students, whether that be enrichment, ESOL, special education, general education. What we do know is historically through our state assessments, is we still have around 30% of our students that need some sort of support. And historically, in Carroll County, you know, we didn't necessarily have a summer program, a thorough comprehensive summer program, until last year, we attempted to do some of that virtual and then jumpstart face-to-face, et cetera. So we have spent hours just over the last week figuring out what this would look like, and this is going to entail the operations team right there with us with transportation. And we would love to have these opportunities at every single school building rather than magnet sites, so that we can provide the convenience and the opportunity to each school community. So there's a lot of things right now that are being considered and being worked and with great diligence. And so I can, I'm very confident in saying to the board this evening that we're going to have a pretty comprehensive plan put together. John, I don't know if you wanted to add anything from an operations side?
I would just add the numbers. Chris had an earlier slide from before public comments, so you would have it in your pack. It's board members, it's the one, it's the second state revenue update. So the governor did extend the blueprint funding, that was the bill from a couple of years ago, the sort of the phase in or the bridge to eventually to Kerwin. So he refunded or funded from the outset, there's four sub-bullet areas, special ed, 3K, TSI, which is that supplemental instruction. And our share of the original TSI money, the base figures, I think around $480,000. And so the governor, in addition to funding that same amount, is also proposing a supplemental amount for supplemental instruction tutoring, and you see what we're expecting in that category. The second federal stimulus or the ESER funds, we're anticipating a little over $7 million for CCPS there. That funding could go to pay for any of those things that Chris had listed on the one-time revenue priorities, but certainly a big part of that could be academic recovery. I did pull up last year's budget documents, and, you know, I offer this because these are numbers we already worked with, but I would say this would just be the starting point. But last year, as you closed out the budget process for this year's budget, ultimately we made a decision to move one-time money from your fund balance, from our fund balance, into this year's operating budget to begin the recovery process. And for special education recovery and compensatory services, that figure we estimated for that one year was 2.7 million, and so that became something that was transferred in. And for just a summer learning recovery program, almost a million dollars. And, you know, I just throw those numbers out as a reminder of kind of where we initially tried to make a start less, less spring, summer. I don't, you know, they're working on their plans, and they'll have those soon, and we'll be able to put some firmer numbers around it, but those would be the kind of numbers for, you know, for a starting point. They certainly would be much higher than that over the next two or so fiscal years or school years. So, you know, as Chris and Dr. Lockard said, we were aware of a good bit of one-time funding that should be coming our way, but we already have plenty of uses designated for that over the next couple of fiscal years. So I guess to answer your question, as far as tonight, you know, Ms. Sevigney, millions is the answer. Probably, you know, a few million over the next couple of years, just for recovery.
While we're on the subject, Ms. Herbert, is it okay if I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Just in terms of, I know that we're talking about additional services that are going to cost in the millions, and I know that we've all been running like crazy just trying to stand up the hybrid model, first the virtual model and then the hybrid model, and now we're talking about additional services, recovery services that need to come. But have we started, at least, you know, it sounds like there's extensive planning in the works. Have we started thinking about different sorts of delivery of interventions rather than just additional, right? Do you understand what I'm asking, right?
I think I do, and let me see if I can respond to the question. The answer is yes. And so as Mr. Hartlove said, we continuously look at the resources that we've availed to our schools, and where we're trying to go right now is, I think what you're saying, Ms. Sevigney, is that are we looking at the type of efficacy that we need to get from our delivery model right now? So in other words, is our investment, is the return on the investment really showing? And so that's one of the biggest pieces we're doing right now with a small RTI committee that has been working even through the pandemic, of looking at how it is that we can make certain that what it is that we are prescribing, if you will, to students is having an impact, and are we prescribing the right type of intervention to the students to get the results that we want? And then that goes back to an audit, doesn't it? So basically, now we're looking at, hey, is what we're investing in really worth it? And we kind of started doing this last year with the zero base budgeting, but we're spending a lot of time on that right now, saying, where are, what are we, what are we missing right now, and are we prescribing appropriately?
Okay. That's exactly what I was asking. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
And I could only add that Mr. Anderson and his folks have been working on that, and they loop me in constantly for estimates on, you know, what revenue, what resources do we have available, how much, you know, help with, how much things are going to cost. And so far, I see no reason why we cannot cover the things that we want to do. We have, I think we have resources aligned to do the things that are going to be needed, necessary to do. Now, I say that, they're not fully planned out yet, but I feel good in the preliminary discussions that they're having that we're going to be able to take care of these students that have the needs.
Mr. Kyler?
Yes, and some of this you guys just addressed, but number one, I want to compliment, and Chris started it, and Dr. Lockard, you said it too, all of this is online, like 201 pages of your proposed budget. For anybody that wants to look at the details of that, it's all there. And I think a little bit, because people disagree with what we're doing, and I know, and that's not tonight's meeting, but life is harder for everybody from Dr. Lockard through the whole system because of COVID, and I respect so much what everybody's doing. And I'm hearing, which, again, is a constant criticism of government in general, we're not transparent enough. One of the questions I got, how bad currently are we with buses and student transportation? And I think you guys did a pretty good presentation on buses and how they're paid July or August, I can't remember. And so that's there, and I think was very transparent, and it shows. And then, and Chris, you just mentioned about some of the costs now, and you've said almost every meeting, we're saving here, we're spending here, we'd have substitutes, we have hybrid, we have virtual, we have a lot of things going on. And so I guess, number one, and I'll do number two too, and then be quiet, you know, our current costs, we're not ending this year in a hole because of things we have done. You guys have gotten one-time money, you've gotten grants, you've gotten this, you've gotten that, and none of that, therefore, is reflected in ongoing budget. And then moving forward, you guys just mentioned recovery, and I was so glad you mentioned, that's a one-time expense. You said two years, and two years is probably aggressive to cover the damage done by COVID. But, and one of you, I think John mentioned the fund balance and how you've pulled from that, but I just wondered, could you kind of say, looking at this budget, A, we're not starting in a hole because of how this year's been, you guys have gone through and gotten different funds to fund different things, and what we're doing is as cost-effective as it can be. But then moving forward, like recovery money, tutor money, is that, that's one-time money because it's not going to be ongoing, hopefully, for many years, but even though it's multiple years, and then the ongoing part of the budget, and Angie kind of said that about textbooks and stuff, we've got to look at the, that we're going to be back to normal sometime, and we need to be preparing for that. So I've rattled a bunch.
No, I, you know, I'll do my best, and then, Chris, you can jump in. We, last year, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, I'm looking at last year's presentation from last May 13th. We used a little over $8 million of fund balance in this year's budget, correct, Chris?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're not in the hole, Mr. Kyler, because we were pretty strategic in how we used our existing funds, knowing there were certain things we were going to have to cover one time, and we were able to do that. We also, in this budget, are looking at what are our short-term priorities, and that's where this, you know, six to 18-month to two-year planning, that's what I consider short-term. And then, and so we are thinking, okay, we can use a lot of one-time funds to do some of these things over the course of the next two years, but we have long-term needs as well. And long-term needs, I'm very hesitant to say we'll take out a fund balance or we'll take out, because there's that funding cliff that you run into. And so what I'm talking about, what Nick Shachny described, how we can utilize 11-month special educators beyond just the next six to eight months, that's a long-term investment, which will have huge benefit. At our, at our work sessions last year when we did town halls out in the schools, we heard about special education and the needs there. We heard about the challenges associated with that, and so this is another attempt, looking longer term, past compensatory services, past, you know, that recovery, if you will. So I feel like, you know, the one-time funds, we want them, we'll take them, we're never going to turn them down. They serve their purpose, but it's hard to also build a longer-term vision, and that's what we were doing before all this happened, folks, and I was really proud of that work. We were looking at our strategic plan, which we still are. We've tied everything in here that we want to do long-term to our strategic plan. We were looking at that and building that, those budget years out to say, here are the pieces and the years that we want to address those things, and we still have those needs. And so, you know, we're trying to achieve both of those things.
And Chris, I want to thank you for doing the job you had, and unfortunately, we did have to hit, take 8 million out of there, but we also had a five-year plan with the commissioners, and we did not get the 5 million of the the commissioners. And we did not get the 5 million of the, of the five-year plan also. So you also have to think about last year's budget and this year's budget, you know, because we took a, we took a hit on that. So, and, you know, and we did have the plan. And, you know, unfortunately, that's what happened. But I need to thank Chris and working with everybody, and hope that we can get things straightened out on that five-year plan. Donna, you had a?
Yeah, I have, I still have a whole bunch of comments and questions I want to make. But I'll, I'll reiterate some things that you were just saying about the five, the 5 million. You know, we, the situation was that, you know, we, we took MOE graciously back in the spring because we, you know, it was, ended up being a $5 million hit. But we, it was with collaboration with the commissioners. And we knew that there was so much uncertainty with, with the county budget, with the pandemic hitting, that we did take that $5 million hit. But, you know, Ted was projecting at that time, Ted Zaleski, a possible hit to the FY '20 revenue of about 15 million. And we had said that we would try to revisit that in September to see if, if that really was coming to fruition. And with the pandemic never really calming down, we didn't revisit that in September. But at the joint meeting with the commissioners a couple of weeks ago, Ted did say that, that the county budget actual revenues are coming in much more favorable, that we're actually a little bit ahead of the game. Now, some of that was due to federal stimulus coming in, but we know that there's going to be additional federal stimulus coming through. And I'd, I'd like us to consider, you know, since we are facing significant learning recovery that, that we've got to address, in addition to the, the simple needs of the, the operation, operation side moving forward, and we want to make sure that, that we can pay our educators. I know there's still some, still some vitriol on social media, and, and some folks haven't gotten the, the message that in-person instruction is essential. But for the, for the most part, like the vast majority of our educators have answered the call and showed up and worked tremendously hard for the benefit of our students this year. And I really feel that we need to compensate them accordingly. And so that, in addition to all the recovery learning needs that we have, and the fact that the county revenue picture looks pretty good compared to when we said we were going to, you know, that we took the MOE hit of 5 million, I'd like us to consider going back to the original FY '22 request in the budget. I'd like not to let the, the crisis be used as sort of an excuse to, to not get back to, to what we had agreed to as our, our collaborative goals as part of the five-year plan. I know that we, we, Dr. Locker, you're suggesting the 6.2 million dollar increase, but I'd also like to, for us to at least discuss and consider the, going back to, with the 5 million additional, based on the fact that county revenues are looking better than expected. So, and I'm sure, I'm sure, Mr. Weaver, you have some thoughts on that.
I'm sure he has some comments.
Yeah, that's quite preliminary at the point, at this point in time. Yes, we do have some additional revenue coming in from various sources, a lot of one-time revenue here again. And that's not ongoing. And that, you know, that's great for this year, but next year, where does it come from? As we're starting into the budget deliberations, which we haven't really gotten into yet, we are taxed with a whole lot of, about 100 different areas, which we need to address, just not education. You're 50% of our budget, but we still have that other 99 areas that we have to address here. I wouldn't hold too much credence in it at the present time. It's, and we're going to be flush with money. I think we'll be able to meet our obligations, what we said we would. Beyond that, gee, I don't know. You know, things can happen, but right at the present time, we're not looking at a, a whole lot of extra funds in the future. And we plan a five-year budget, of course, Ted has it planned out. And you guys, we're out of balance in the out-years on this. And it even looks worse when we look at '27 now, where we're going. So we have to balance things and get through this year. And hopefully, we can get back to the out-years in balance, is what we're trying to do. And, you know, we're, it depends how we look at it. We're, preliminary views, we're millions out in those out-years. I mean, quite a few million out. And so we really are going to have to deliberate, going to be talking about where we're going, where we're going to find funds, or be able to have ongoing funds coming in. Because what you're asking for has to be ongoing every year here. And plus, we have capital funds here that we'll be looking at in the, also in this. So, you know, between operational monies and capital funds, we're really going to be squeaking by if we can this year. And the out-years are going to be some of the driving force. So I wouldn't plan on a whole lot. Now, I think we, here again, our joint meeting, we, you know, I think we're starting, we're getting to the point where we can work together to solve the problems in both areas. But this is going to take quite a bit of collaboration to get there. And I wouldn't plan too heavily on increased funds above what we've put into the budget at present time. It's going to be tough. Now, if we get a windfall somewhere, I'll bring it up at your priority on that.
No, and I, I certainly appreciate the collaboration comments. Obviously, we, we had a really good working relationship going on for the last budget cycle before the pandemic hit. And I'd definitely like to see us continue that. I think what I, what I was suggesting that wasn't necessarily asking for additional funds, I'm just saying, going back to what the, so prior to the May adjustments that were made because of the pandemic, I'd like to go back to the FY '22 amount, the dollar amount that we had in, in the budget request as part of the five-year plan.
I understand where you're coming from. And I appreciate your looking out for the school system and the school board. We have to be realistic and honest with each other as what is going to be realistic as we get into our budget. I can't give you an answer at the present time because we haven't really started. As we get into this and decide, I think it's, now, if we come bring money here, where do we cut, is what it's going to come down to. What else, what services or what don't we provide elsewhere in the county to provide here? And that's, I think Ted has made it quite clear that we're to that point. If we add something somewhere, something has to get cut. So I, we'll have to see how it plays out. But here again, I think we have to stay in touch. We have communications is going to be a key to where we go. And I hear what you're saying.
Dr. Locker?
Thanks, Commissioner Weaver. I just wanted to clarify. So did I, did I hear you say that you, I thought I heard you say you, you believe that what's in the five-year plan for this year, it's going to be a stretch to meet, but that you could meet that. But has that, has the plan that, that we agreed upon, has that been changed? I heard you talk about the out-years and being out of balance in the out-years. And I was just curious if that's something that's been changed to the plan that's posted on the website, or made public, or?
No, it hasn't been changed. Actually, I, I wasn't including that. I was looking at our whole budget.
Gotcha.
And our out-years at the present time, the first time last year, we had to stick with the 2020 budget and kind of flatline things. And COVID was uncertainty at that point. And if we start looking at, I think it's 25, 24 and 25, we're short where these funds are going to come in there, by several million dollars each year. It grows each year. And it depends what we do in the budget. We have different scenarios we're going to have to go with, whether we flatline '22, or we have, you know, only certain percentage growth, or where we go, how we can balance our budget out in the future. And that's what's kept us strong in this county, the fact that we don't do a single-year budget. You know, anybody can balance a budget for one year, but all of a sudden now, next year, you have more deficit to deal with. And the fact is, and I, I get aggravated with it myself sometimes, that, you know, we're out of whack, out in the out-years, but we have to have the funds coming in to cover those. And so it keeps Carroll County very strong financially. And I, I think that's always been a good plan. The school system's going to get looked out for. I mean, that's not one of the things we want to shortcut anywhere, and we can't. And we, but we also have quite a few other things coming in here that are going to be in competition here in the next, in, not next year, not these couple of years, but in, I'm saying, two to three years out, we're going to see some competition for funds. And we're, we're deciding how to do that now. So it's not a, it's not an easy task at the present time, which you, you would know. We have to look at what's realistic, too. So as I said, we're going to keep communication lines open and see where we can go here in the future. Now, your budget will be passed before we even get involved in ours. And that, and then the state budget, even after ours is passed, they're still having decided in theirs. It makes this whole process just backwards, as far as I'm concerned. But I hear what you're saying, and I'll take it back. And we'll be talking about all these things. And open, it'll be all transparent by chance. And I'm sure you'll have a, Chris or somebody be there when we need to deal with the education portion of it, so.
And Mr. Weaver, you and I understand this budget, and we've always said it's backwards. And I don't know if they'll ever change it. But I just, I agree with Donna, if, you know, if we don't ask for it, you know, you, you won't, you know, you won't even consider. And I, I know it's, we've all worked very well together. I want to continue that. And that's what Donna and I ran on many, many years ago, that we all need to work together. And I, I think that's a, a good idea what you brought up. And if we don't ask for it, you'll, you know, it, it, it will not hurt us to ask for that in that five-year plan. And, and I'm glad that you understand where, where Donna and I, where we're coming from from that. So, and I appreciate that.
Oh, I understand.
You and I go way back, and we've always been, you know, we've always worked together.
Right. And we're not asking for more, really. I mean, we're basically saying, we would like you to honor the commitment that we made, if it's possible, from the perspective of how the county revenues are coming in.
Right.
Right? And if, if it's not possible, then we just need to work together to, to figure out how to, how to make it work.
Can, Mr. Kyler, Mr. Kyler?
Yeah.
I know Donna has more questions, but while we're on this subject.
Yeah, while, on this subject. But, and, and yeah, I think the, the two groups, the commissioners and the Board of Ed, over the last couple of years, communicated way better than it was in the past. And on your one-year plus five years, and we do need to look at the fifth year out, again, a little bit this year. But then the other thing I thought worth mentioning, as part of talking about where we ended up last year, you guys did a lot of cost-cutting in central office and throughout the entire system, is how we got through that. And some of that, maybe all of it, helps in the ongoing. But it's, it's, it was made tight, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Hartlove mentioned the zero-based budgeting exercise we undertook the, the prior 10 months to the, the March-April timeframe of last year, and identified cost cuts, and, and utilized that to, to make last year's budget whole in light of all the other, you know, reductions we had to absorb.
Yeah. At the time we were doing that, we, we didn't anticipate that being used to balance the budget. But unfortunately, that's how it, it worked out. But you're, you're right, those are ongoing every year. That's kind of baked into the cake. So it brought the base of our budget down significantly. So yes, we did, we did that exercise. It was very valuable. We, we didn't anticipate the pandemic, but we were prepared for it.
And, Ms. Batagley on this subject?
I was going to say, I mean, even though with COVID, I mean, if you look around the county, there has been a good bit of development still happening. We have more houses going in off Solomon Road, and there are about 500,000. So that's roughly, probably $4,000 in property tax for each home there. You know, developments in Tawney Town outside of Manchester. So there is still development happening, where revenue is going to be coming into the county. So it's, it is still good to see that, yes, even though we've had COVID and it caused a lot of issues, we are still having families come in and contribute to the economy here in Carroll County. So it's something I think we also need to constantly keep thinking about, too, is there might be a downside of this, but there is a positive. We are still growing as a county. A little bit, yeah, but it still helps. It still helps.
All right. Ms. Savigny?
Yeah. And I, I did want to mention, you know, there, there were some worries about student enrollment declines and things like that. I think that we don't necessarily want to factor that in moving forward, because I think that we have bolstered community confidence by getting back to, to in-person learning as soon as possible. And I do think that we should expect a good proportion of those students to come back. And not all of them, certainly. But I think that because we have been able to bolster community confidence and how we've been handling the in-person instruction, that we will get a good chunk of those students back. But in, in another vein, I want to, you know, we're kind of making all of these assumptions that we're going to be fully in-person in the fall. And what have, have we given any thought to the, the situation that might occur, that COVID is still around, it's still wreaking havoc, that we still have a lot of parents who want to keep their kids virtual in the fall, depending on what the situation is? Have, have we given any thought to maybe creating a virtual environment for certain portions of our kids, where, you know, their teachers are fully virtual, the kids are fully virtual, and you marry those up? And that, I'm not sure whether that would have good impact on the budget, or a negative impact on the budget, depending on how many students we're talking about.
So we have been talking about that. I'm going to turn to Cindy and/or Jason, as we've thought about. I mean, you know, gosh, we'd really like to be back to normal. But we also have to plan for whatever comes our way. So Cindy, do you want to, or Jason, share a little bit of the, some of the thinking there as it relates to virtual learning moving forward?
So, yeah, we've been thinking about how we'll deal with that in the fall. You know, we're hoping to be, you know, all in-person in the fall. We also know that we can't continue in a hybrid version forever. But what we're looking at is the cost of, what it would cost to have a, a virtual option for those parents who would want that for their students, particularly at the high school and middle school level. Because that, that is a little, that's a little easier to, for us to get for our students at those levels, rather than the elementary level. So we are looking into what that might look like if we, if we kind of contract out those services.
Yeah. And just to, to piggyback on that, so there's been conversation around, so alignment of courses. And we know that obviously, we would have to have those, those courses essentially approved by the board. And so as Cindy just said, what we're looking at is potential pathways for those high school students with the ability to take courses, potentially, if, if the family were to decide to, to be able to get a pathway completed, totally virtually. Obviously, that is going to take, that's going to be quite the investment. But it's also something that is feasible. We, we continue to collaborate with our neighbors who have done so, and learn more about that. But we are at the initial stages right now. We do know that families are interested in that. We've received a couple, a couple of phone calls last week. So that's, that's something that's, that's always on the front end of our, our discussion as well, when we're planning for the future.
And just to, it, there's no doubt, it is a cost. The best, the best scenario for us is to be back 100% in-person. But I know, I, you know, I have been part of discussions with Cindy and, and Jason, and the models that they're looking at are as cost-effective as we can, as we can make them. It's really more of a contingency plan than the main plan. You know, we, we want, we're, we want to get back to where, you know, what we're best at, which is in-person learning.
And I guess I would just try to challenge that thinking. And obviously, I understand if we were to contract that out, that that would be a significant cost. But if we were able to do it internally, like if it were 100% virtual model, you wouldn't need, you wouldn't have the restriction of a school-by-school basis. You could do a countywide, you know, virtual middle school, a countywide virtual high school. And that would give you the capability to put some teachers dedicated towards that, right? If, depending on, obviously, we'd have to figure out what the economies of scale would be. But if, if it weren't needed to be contracted out, depending on how many parents would But if, if it weren't needed to be contracted out, depending on how many parents would opt, take that option, and it, they would have to obviously commit for the entire year and going forward. Like, that's not something that you would be able to opt out of at, at some point in time and go back to in-person, because all of our staffing models would, would be dependent upon it. But I just wanted to kind of challenge the thinking on that, that there, there might be a way to do it, if we were able to get economies of scale and not have to contract it out.
We, we are looking at different models and different options. One thing to keep in mind, if we, if we were to pursue some kind of whole-county virtual elementary school, virtual middle school, and virtual high school, is that we would also need, according to MSD's requirements, we would need administrators for those schools.
Sorry, we would need what for those schools?
Administrators.
Administrators, okay.
So we're, what we're looking to do is, is, is try to offer up as the best options we can to our parents and students at the best cost models.
And to piggyback that again, Ms. Savigny, your, your concern about the marrying up, I believe the, what Cindy and I are talking about this evening would be that teachers would be included into those classes. So in other words, when we would invest in these seats for our students, it would not be necessarily one of our teachers teaching the course. It would be aligned to our curriculum, so we wouldn't have to marry up our teachers. So to your point, actually, Ms. Savigny, is that we're not really losing staff by doing this. So by all means, we, we continue to challenge one another in regards to how to make this work. And so we are looking more along the lines of a program rather than a school. And I think that's what Ms. McCabe's referencing, is that it's, it would probably be a more viable option for us as a system.
Any other questions?
No, but it just seems like that last thought, then sheds a new light possibly on how we look at the budget. I mean, again, we're looking at it now, saying, okay, this is what it could possibly look like if we're back in-person full-time. But again, it's almost like we need to sort of look also at what it might look like if you go to one of the models that you've just described as well. And I know time is a factor here.
Time is a factor. It's a good point, Dr. Dorsey. And it's also, you know, we, we need information.
I know.
You know, throughout this whole thing, we've said all along, information's constantly changing, the scenarios are constantly changing and evolving. And one of the things that we'd need to do early this, early this spring is get some information, you know, in some what-if scenarios for, from our parents. So, you know, what if, you know, a what-if scenario where would you want your, you know, child to, to be able to access this kind of, of program or not, or, you know? And so we need information, because I don't know, right now, we're not sure. We've, we've had a couple inquiries, but we don't know exactly if there's 10 people, 100 people, or 1,000 people that want to take advantage of, of virtual opportunities next year if we're in-person. And that, that, obviously, those numbers all change everything moving forward. So it's also a little bit of the unknown. So we're, we're, we've looked at some models of counties around us, and how they've, how they've been able to, for whatever reason, whether it's home-hospital kinds of situations, whether it's, you know, just a choice for parents to have their students take virtual courses, for whatever the reason may be. And, and we were kind of looking into what's worked in systems around us. That's what they were referencing a little while ago. I, I recognize if the scale were significant enough, we, we might have to look at that differently.
The, from a, from a funding perspective, the, the good news would be if, if we were to be, if the, if the pandemic were to kind of linger into next year, the federal dollars also allow us to spend them through next year as well. So we, we certainly, you know, we, we certainly would have some funding to deal with any kind of, of transition. If this transition goes further into next year, we would, we would have the federal dollars would be available to help us with that. So, so that's good news.
Mr. Kyler?
And, and I think, and you guys referred to it, we're fortunate to have areas around us and throughout the country that have been open since August, and they've transitioned through a bunch of this. And then, Dr. Lockhart, I think you said earlier, we're seeing a lot of, I think, all the jurisdictions now in Maryland, planning to open. And, and I think some have probably reached out to you, but they're all going to find out how hard it is, unfortunately, and, and, and we just need to keep learning from all of them. And then my last question for this evening, forget all that, throw that back out, how comfortable are you with what we're seeing moving forward for next year?
How comfortable am I with?
The budget you're submitting.
The budget. Well, I think that the ongoing revenue is, is a must. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable if, if we can realize those dollars. It's, you know, I'm trying to be as realistic and, and practical and transparent as possible. You know, I appreciate what Mrs. Savigny is bringing to the conversation tonight. When I started this process in, well, in the fall, but really in earnest in December, and then bring it to you in January, I don't have the benefit of even the information we have now. I don't have the benefit of knowing where the county is. Now we're starting to get state information. So I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to be, you know, as, as, as practical and realistic as possible, knowing that we have needs, knowing that, you know, we need to take care of our employees, knowing that we need to take care of our students. And so I think additional funding would absolutely benefit us moving forward. I, I take this first approach, and I know it's an iterative approach, that's why now it's, it becomes the, the board's budget that we submit to the, to the county. And so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable to the degree that, that what I've put here is a minimum, is a minimum number, okay? You know, additional funding, and certainly I appreciate what you've, what you've shared tonight, Commissioner Weaver. But I, I recognize, too, that, that, you know, no funds are going to go without being addressed to the priorities that we've outlined, because we have a bunch in the queue, you know?
Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. I just conferred with our attorney. If we are interested in adding that $5 million, I will need a motion to proceed.
I would like to clarify that I wasn't asking for an additional $5 million. I was simply stating that I think we should request what was agreed to for FY22, the dollar amount, as part of the five-year budget deliberation last year.
And I do.
Before the MOE request. Like, so I'm not, I'm not saying that we want to increase our request for FY22. I'm saying that we want to request what was in the five-year plan for FY22.
We are. I, I mean, that's what, I went right to the plan for FY22, and it was 6.3, is that right, Chris?
Yes.
So I've, I've requested exactly what was in the plan for FY22. FY21, we didn't get what was in the plan. We got $5 million less.
Right.
We also, we understood that. But I am requesting exactly what was in the plan for this year.
Okay.
So.
Just to, to clarify, basically, with the, the commissioners had a, a five-year plan, 3.13% increase each year. And then last year, we didn't get that, but then what they did was, is they just, they, they re-based the plan. They gave us 3.13% increases each year, based upon that new FY21 base. So it's a reduced plan all the way out, but it gets us back to an increase of 3.13% each year, if that makes sense. Because some folks could think, well, they just moved the one year down and then left the rest of the plan alone. They basically re-based the plan to be a 3.13% increase off of that new base.
Okay, so then I guess what I am suggesting is I want to go back to the original FY22 before the $5 million adjustment for MOE last year.
Which is what you're requesting? That's the budget he's done? So if, if.
No, no, well, no, I'm, I'm saying, when we did the budget, the budget request.
Let, let me see if I understand.
Okay.
So last year, we, Carroll County and a lot of other areas, we lost the $5 million. And, and because that's ongoing money, we may never catch back up to that. But, and we recognize that Carroll County probably, they're not going to recover a lot of what they lost last year, but what we want is to make sure we get the step that was in the five-year plan that we should get for this year. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Not exactly. I think what I'm saying is, so we developed the FY21 budget that then had a 3.13% increase over that, that, that was in the five-year plan, and that was what was about to get agreed to when the pandemic hit and we had the $5 million cut. So what I'm saying is, and I understand that when we had got the $5 million cut, and then that all got re-baselined with a 3.13% increase off of that new number. What I'm saying is because the county revenue didn't take the hit that it was expected to take in FY20, that, that that $5 million didn't necessarily have to be there, that we should have been back. So I'm not saying that I want to recover that $5 million that we lost, but I want that $5 million back in the baseline.
Or any part of it.
Or any part of it that we can get, and then the, the 3.13% increase off of that.
Right, because that would then change the actual 3.13% of.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
You want to reinstate the 21 budget.
I want to reinstate the, the 20, the 21, but, right, the, the full, the full amount of what the 22 budget had been before all of the adjustments were made.
All right, now, we need to make a motion that we all understand. And I think you just stated that you make a motion to go back to the.
Right, I think as, as, as a discussion point, and as we, we see what the county, obviously, it's not going to happen if the county revenues don't support it, right? But I want to make sure that we're, that we understand, we took a significant hit, we took major cuts to the system, and if that wasn't necessar, wasn't necessary, because the, the county didn't have to take, didn't take that revenue hit in '20, I want to make sure that we can kind of get back to.
Yes.
Reinstating where the budget was in the original FY22 request. Does that?
I was going to say, for, for the public's knowledge, can someone give the actual dollar amounts? Because I'm pretty sure the public's going, okay, what's the amount?
What is the amount, right?
So what is the actual dollar amount? And then we can probably make the most.
Chris, you're on.
Well, we're going back, we're going back here, I believe, I'm looking at our plan, I believe it was $209,776,420, as opposed to what we have in the budget, which is, let's see if I can find the exact page. What we have in the budget is $204, 204,617,860.
So it is that 4.9 million or 5 million? Not quite sure what the rounding was on that.
Correct. Right. Yes.
$5 million.
And I would, I would just, you know, throw out that you, you know, we could, you could have the discussion, and you have next week when you can adopt, so we, we can get specifics, because I, that is kind of a quick look. So I, I, I may have, you know, looked at a number wrong or something like that. So you, if you really want to do an action, I don't know if I'd make it that specific at this point.
Okay, we still don't have a complete motion.
Well, that, that was my question. Do we need a motion, or do we just want, you know, you guys to come back at the meeting with a proposal that includes the concept we're talking about?
Yeah, I don't know that we, do we need a vote, or do we just need consensus that that's something that we want Dr. Lockhart to make as an adjustment to the budget? Because we're not approving the budget.
No, no.
Just a work session.
Okay.
Well, if, if, if the board is making a motion to amend that, then it has to make a motion. If the board is going to ask Dr. Lockhart to come back with additional figures for the board to review and approve at the subsequent date, can you not need a motion right now?
Right, because we haven't approved anything right now.
No, we haven't.
This is, this is a discussion, right?
So you're asking him to go back and look at the FY21?
One.
Okay. So I think we would need consensus from the board that that's something that we want Dr. Lockhart to do. So I'm, I am suggesting that, and seeing, asking what everyone else's opinion is.
So we, we don't have a motion on the floor, we're just suggesting for you to go do that.
Right, is there consensus? So what I'm hearing you say is, I will go back, I will look at it like the full allotment was provided, and then we'll bring you a figure of 3.13% for this year's budget, which shows an actual increase requested. Did I say that right, Chris?
Um, yes. Yeah, basically, there's two options. There's the option that we went forward with in your proposed budget, which is right out of the current plan. That's a 3.13% increase off of the current base. Or there's another second option, and that's to go back to the earlier plan, the prior year's plan, and look at the FY22 budget amount, utilize that amount. And I believe I'm correct that that is the 2009 amount. So you, we're either going to do one of those two options as, as, as the budget.
Okay, and Mr. Weaver?
Uh, just, just to be clear, you know, money is changing funds at the state level like crazy, between this fund is transferring money. And, yeah, I know you saw, I guess, the newspaper, and it looked like state, the county's getting funds additionally here, and some are coming in, but we're losing funds elsewhere. Highway user tax and all these others, you know, less gas being used, we, we don't know what that's going to be here. And the state, you know, depends on the veto in Corwin, where, what happens there, what happens with the legislature right here. We're balancing Jell-O in our hands right now, we're not sure, funds. I, I applaud you for requesting an additional funds, and I would have Dr. Lockhart simply make a request for reinstating those funds here, if at all possible. But, you know, I, I really can't give you any advice right now, is that, yeah, that's a good idea or not, because we're, our budget is, you know, yeah, this is coming up, this is going down. So we're, we're doing the same thing the state is, you know, where, where is this going to wind up? So.
Right, I totally understand that there are so many moving parts right now, and that there's a lot of work to be done to, how did Commissioner Rossine state it? We're going to, we need to turn all this uncertainty and risk into numbers.
Exactly, and, you know, I would simply make the request here at this time, because you, you have a need, we know that, everybody has a need for it, but it's, you know, we can't, we can't give an answer at the present time. I think it's a good request, though.
Right, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Weaver, for working with us.
Appreciate that.
Dr. Lockhart, do you have anything else you want to say? You understand what we're, what we're asking for?
Yes. Chris, any clarifying questions?
Um, I'm good. I'm actually just trying to pull up the county's plan, but I, I, I'm pretty sure I understand the intent.
Yep, we'll, we'll get it, yep.
All right, Dr. Dorsey.
And I just wanted to add one other thing, and I think we've sort of talked around this, but again, for all of the items that we have listed as priorities, if we can see the price tag associated with each of those, it would be very, very helpful.
Yeah, we verbalized those for the ongoing budget tonight. Are you also suggesting for the one-time uses as well?
The more information we have, I think the lens becomes a little clearer for.
I'll do my best for, for the immediate future. Like I said, it's kind of hard over the course of 12 to 18 months to, to do that, but we'll do our best.
Okay.
So, Dr. Dorsey, you're looking for like an itemization of those numbers?
Yes, like last year, when we went into those meetings, we had a handout that said specifically, you know, if we would go with this priority, this is what the, the cost would be. If we go with another priority, this is what the cost would be. So just for each of these items, again, just give us the, the price tag associated with them. I think that would be helpful.
Sure, and like I said, we, for the operating budget items that we included, for the ongoing budget, we, we talked about that tonight. Like, our, our challenge for some of the longer-term one-time uses will be a challenge.
Yes. You, you don't know how long it's going to take for recovery, all that one-time stuff. And I do, we do understand that, Dr. Lockhart.
Right. Right, we'll do our best to give an estimate there.
Well, Commissioner Weaver, I do thank you again for understanding, but if we don't ask, we will not receive. And does anybody else have any other comments? Dr. Lockard, do you have a few parting words?
I don't. I appreciate all the questions in the conversation. Commissioner Weaver, thank you for your participation and input this evening.
And Chris, thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks for it, yeah, and everything.
And your group to get all that together, because I know it's not easy because you've got a lot of other things on your mind, so.
I thank you, and it's really a tip of my hat to my staff. They do a great job.
Okay. Well, then I guess then this concludes the end of our budget workshop. And everyone, have a good evening, and thank you.